Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. As Chair of the Counterterrorism Committee and on behalf of the Government of India, it is my great pleasure to welcome you all to Mumbai and to the soft opening session in tribute to the victims of terrorism. The provisional agenda of today’s meeting was circulated previously among the committee members and was agreed. In accordance with the agenda, I shall conduct the proceedings of this meeting. First, the wreath laying. May I invite His Excellency, Mr. Michael Musa Adamo, Foreign Minister of Gabon, as President of the Security Council for the month of October, to lay a wreath on behalf of the Security Council to commemorate the victims of terrorism, including the victims of the 26-11 Mumbai terror attacks. I will now invite His Excellency, Dr. Subramanyam Jayshankar, External Affairs Minister of India, to lay a wreath. I will now invite the heads of delegation from amongst the committee and the senior officials from the United Nations to present floral tributes. Her Excellency, Ms. Shirley Ayoka Bocce, Minister for Foreign Affairs and Regional Integration of Ghana. His Excellency, Mr. James Cleverly, Secretary of State for Foreign, Commonwealth and Development Affairs of the United Kingdom. Her Excellency, Ms. Reem Ibrahim Al Hashemi, Minister of State for International Cooperation of the United Arab Emirates. Her Excellency, Ms. Maggie Fino, Deputy Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs, the Republic of Albania. The distinguished representative of Brazil. The distinguished representative of France. The distinguished representative of Ireland. The distinguished representative of Kenya. The distinguished representative of Mexico. The distinguished representative of Norway. The distinguished representative of China. The distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. The distinguished representative of Malta. The distinguished representative of the United States. The distinguished representative of Ecuador. The distinguished representative of Japan. The distinguished representative of Mozambique. The distinguished representative of Switzerland. Mr. Vladimir Voronkov, Under-Secretary General for the United Nations Office of Counterterrorism. Mr. Veik Xiong Chun, Acting Executive Director of the Counterterrorism Committee Executive Directorate. I will now request that all participants might kindly observe a minute of silence to commemorate the victims of terrorism. I now invite His Excellency, Mr. Michael Musa Adamo, Foreign Minister of Gabon, to read a statement. Excellency, you have the floor.
Colleagues, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. We are meeting today in a place blurred with indelible scars of abhorrent phenomenon that is one of the major threats to peace and security in the world. The terrorist attack perpetrated here 14 years ago reflects the barbarity that terrifies humanity in all regions of the world and constitutes the very negation of human values. Our response to terrorism threats must be firm and coordinated. In line with the UN Global Counterterrorism Strategy, we must collectively and urgently act to prevent and combat terrorism in all its forms and manifestations. We must prevent terrorism from acting, depriving them of resources and exploring new perspective of action to prevent terrorists from recruiting and depriving them of means to spread their barbaric ideology. As the threat evolves with the use of new technologies, including the increase of use of cryptocurrencies and the instrumentalization of social medias by terrorist groups, our response should be adapted. To be effective, our response should encompass at all levels and in a united manner, including through the full use of the two 67 sanctions regime. Colleagues, by renewing the mandate of the Counterterrorism Committee for another four years last year, by unanimous vote on the members of the council, we reaffirm our commitment to strengthening the capacity of the United Nations Member States to prevent terrorism acts on the territory of each of our states and in the world by intensifying the exchange of information, judicial cooperation, border controls, and fighting against terrorist financing. In several regions of the world, particularly in Africa, the nature of national, regional, and international responses to increasingly organized and overlooking terrorist threats make interregional and international cooperation crucial for effective actions against terrorism. This cooperation must not only focus on military and police interventions but also adopt a holistic approach based on prevention. Indeed, the long-term threat posed by terrorists is the result of the ability of its hateful followers to operate in territories marked markets and places of expression where states have a weak moderating presence. In this regard, counterterrorism initiatives, particularly in fragile states, should be part of a border program capable of addressing weak territorial, political, and economic governance to prevent violent extremist groups from legitimizing violence as a form of political expression or from making criminal profits from their participation in an underground economy. In conclusion, I would like to refer my country’s unwavering condemnation of terrorism in all its form and welcome the commitment and determination shown by the Security Council in the fight against terrorists, which in providing to one of the most serious threats to international peace and security. I thank you.
I thank His Excellency for the statement and I have the honour to invite His Excellency, Dr. Subramanyam Jayshankar, External Affairs Minister of India, to make a statement on behalf of the host country. Excellency, you have the floor.
Excellency, Mr. Michael Musa Adamo, Honourable Foreign Minister of the Gabonese Republic and President of the UN Security Council. Heads of delegations of the UN Security Council Member States, Excellencies. 14 years ago, on 26th November 2008, the city of Mumbai was witness to one of the most shocking terror attacks of our times. 140 Indian nationals and 26 citizens of 23 other countries lost their lives in a period of four days. In fact, this entire city was held hostage by terrorists who had entered from across the border. If much worse was averted, it was only because they ran into the collective resolve of Indian security forces, brave civilians, and the security and staff of this very Taj Hotel. All of them fought back valiantly in their own ways to ensure that the forces of evil were finally defeated. Eighteen members of the Indian police forces, 12 members of the Taj Hotel staff and security, were martyred in the line of duty. As we pay tribute to them at this 26-11 memorial site, we salute their valor and resolve. We all recall that the victims included ordinary Mumbikers going about their daily lives at the Chhatrapati Maharaj terminal’s railway station, the patients, doctors, and nursing staff at the Kama Hospital, the guests and staff of the Taj Mahal Palace Hotel, of Café Leopold and the Oberoi Trident Hotel, the Chabad House where Baby Moshe’s parents were killed, and innocent bystanders on the streets. It was not just an attack on Mumbai but an attack on the international community. Nationals of specific countries were identified before being murdered. As a result, the commitment of each and every Member State of the United Nations to combat terrorism stood publicly challenged. Since then, we have endeavored to bring the masterminds and the perpetrators of this attack to justice. This task remains unfinished. Therefore, the coming together of the UN Security Council’s Counterterrorism Committee to this venue is both special and significant. I thank all members of the Security Council and other Member States who have joined us today in an expression of solidarity. Together, we should send out the message that the international community will never give up on holding terrorists accountable and delivering justice. 26-11 will never ever be forgotten.
I thank His Excellency for his statement. I will now request, His Excellency, the Foreign Minister of Gabon and the Foreign Minister of India, to kindly proceed to the memorial book and sign the memorial book. Thank you. Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Let me extend a warm welcome to all of you in Mumbai, the financial capital of India, for attending the soft opening of the special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee of the Security Council, as well as the informal briefing on countering the financing of terrorism in national and regional contexts. Warmest welcome specifically to His Excellency, Dr. S. Jayshankar, the External Affairs Minister of the Government of India; His Excellency, Mr. Michael Musa Adamo, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Ghana, of Gabon; Her Excellency, Ms. Shirley Ayoka Bocce, Minister for Foreign Affairs and Regional Integration of Ghana; His Excellency, Mr. James Cleverly, Secretary of State for Foreign, Commonwealth, and Development Affairs of the United Kingdom; Her Excellency, Ms. Reem Ibrahim Al Hashemi, Minister of State for International Cooperation of the United Arab Emirates; Her Excellency, Ms. Maggie Fino, Deputy Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs, Republic of Albania; Mr. Vladimir Voronkov, Under-Secretary General, the United Nations Office of Counterterrorism, New York City. I also welcome heads of delegation, heads of United Nations agencies, international and regional organizations, and other participants who have made it convenient to attend today’s briefing. Likewise, I am also honoured to extend a warm welcome to our special guests. Likewise, I'm also honored to extend a warm welcome to our special guests, victims and survivors of terrorist attacks, including the heinous attack on Mumbai that took place between 26th and 29th November 2008 at this very hotel and across this very city. It is important that we all listen to experiences of these victims so that the international community might learn about the untold accounts of the consequences of terrorism, as well as stories of personal resilience. I will commence the program by presenting to you a video on the Mumbai terror attack.
Stand in a line and you...
And not only one, it was around two, three bombs. And we were in the kitchen, me and one more helper. I was hiding in the storeroom and we were there up till quarter to eleven next morning. They didn't allow me to go anywhere. They just surrounded me like I was in a cage. And my baby, he started screaming, looking at all that.
At that time, in the hotel lobby, there must have been about thirty or so people. I saw, I would say, ten, twelve people fall to the ground whilst I was still there. I think about four, maybe five of us actually made it out of that lobby area. And I was just lucky enough to be able to make it into that.
She's perhaps one of the worst sufferers of the cardinal...
Because I refuse to leave the memory of them lying under that table.
We also have a video statement from Mr. Moshe Holsberg. Moshe is one of the youngest survivors of the twenty-six eleven Mumbai attacks. His parents were killed when terrorists attacked Nariman House, a Jewish outreach center and drug prevention service in Mumbai. May we play the video statement of Moshe?
[speaking in Israeli] My name is Moshe Holsberg, from Israel. I was born two years ago. I came with the most famous names, Gaby and Rbki, here in Mumbai, in Nariman House. The names of my family came here to Chabad, with the help of Rabbi Milubavich. The house was open to all people, Jews and non-Jews. The wife of Lysandra asked me to speak when she heard the cries. They tried to break us and they broke us into pieces. They wanted the names of my family. And four more of them were in Chabad. Sandra saved me from the storm with her mind. Thank you, God. I left with my mother and daughter. My friends, the most famous, Rabbi Simon and Jewish Rousenberg, took me to their house in Israel and raised me until today. Four years ago, I met Mr. Naam Dharmaudi in Israel. He told me a lot. He allowed us to go to Jerusalem together with the head of the government, Mahari Binatanyo. He loved me with fire and hatred and he allowed me to meet my father. We lived here in Taj Mahal. I am grateful to him for his kindness to me. It is important that you come here today to find ways to fight terrorism, so no one can pass through what I've done. Have a good day.
I thank Moshe for his remarks and message. And I now have the honor to invite Devika Rotavan, a survivor of the nine-eleven Mumbai attacks. Devika, you have the floor.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Devika Nativala Rotavan. I live in Mumbai. I'm a third-year Bachelor of Arts student.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Devika Rotavan. She is a resident... I'm a resident of Mumbai and I'm a student of third-year graduation.
[speaking in Israeli] My family, my father, my brother and me, we were going to Pune, to meet my older brother. We went to the CHT session at about 9:30. Suddenly, a bomb exploded. Someone fired a gun. People were running. I didn't understand what was happening. My brother was also running in a different direction.
On the evening of 26th November, she was supposed to travel to Pune with her family and that's why she has reached the Mumbai-Chhatrapati-Shibaji terminal. On that fateful night, she saw bullets being fired and along with her father, they ran for cover.
I try to run with my father. We try to run. Then a gun comes to my right leg. Sometimes I see a person with a big gun in his hand and they're firing a gun.
While we were trying to take cover and trying to seek shelter, a bullet hit my leg and then we saw this dreadful face of a terrorist who was firing indiscriminately.
I was terrified. I went to Jaja Hospital. There were nearly six operations. A gun flew over my leg. My leg was broken.
She fainted. She was taken to the hospital. She was operated upon and the bullet taken out of her injured leg.
When I was 9 years, 11 months old, when I was shot...
She was nine years, eleven months when she was shot.
An officer of Mumbai called me, saying, "Will you identify in court?" We said yes. My father saw two violent crimes and I was accused. In June 2009, I and my father went to court to identify.
Subsequently, she received a call from the local police asking if she would be willing to testify against the terrorist who was caught in India. She checked with her parents and then they went across to the judicial courts and submitted their testimony.
That's my only dream, to become an officer and end terrorism.
Since then, she's had one singular dream, to study, become, hopefully, a police officer and end this scourge of terrorism.
The twenty-six eleven bombing happened in Mumbai for three days. In those three days, we discovered the best officers of our country. Many were killed, many were wounded. If the whole country is clean, when terrorism is over, when terrorism is over, who is still alive today, who knows what their plan is for our country or where else to go to attack? I want this, that this bombing can't happen anywhere.
Thank you. The attacks lasted three to four days. Many brave policemen and armed forces lost their lives. She feels that proper justice would only be served when terrorism is completely eliminated from the face of this planet.
I want to request from the UN members and from my Indian government that this violent crime should be ruled against, so that any violent crime in our country or anywhere else can't be known to anyone.
It is important that the UN and the international community makes the strictest laws to ensure that such acts don't happen ever again.
I want to thank you all. Good luck, good health, good marriage.
She thanks everybody for inviting her to this August gathering. She says, "Thank you."
I thank Devika for sharing with us her experience. And I now have the honor to invite Nidhi Chappikar. Nidhi is a survivor of the terrorist attack at Brussels Airport in 2016. Nidhi, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Honorable Minister for External Affairs of India, Sri S. Jaishankarji; Honorable Members of the United Nations Security Council; Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, a very warm good morning to all of you. At the outset, I would like to extend my gratitude to Madam Ruchira Kamboj, Permanent Representative of India to the United Nations for inviting me over to be a part of this in memoriam. Ladies and gentlemen, please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Nidhi Chappikar. I was an air hostess with Jet Airways. I loved my job as flying crew as it made me feel limitless in skies, until one such day changed my life forever. I lost my job, my passion, as I was injured in a bomb blast and I am currently unemployed. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm one of the victims of the terrorism and a survivor of the deadliest terror attack which took place in the history of Belgium on March 22nd, 2016, at Brussels. The blast left me extensively injured and I had to be kept in induced coma. Every day, my family was living with that pain of uncertainty as I was struggling between life and death. After 23 days of being in coma, I opened my eyes. Unfortunately, I could not even recognize my family members who were watching my excruciating pain and were my only support system. That was the effect and the trauma inflicted on me. I had lost my memory, but that's not the old. My body sustains nearly 20% burns. Some of my muscles were scooped. Few of my bones got crushed. Some bones got dissolved. I suffer from tinnitus, partial loss of hearing. My eardrums are damaged, resulting in a pressure leak from my inner ear, which may cost me hearing loss in future. I still have many sharp nails, metal sharp nails, embedded in my body with the one in my eye orbit. There's a fear that it could cost me my vision. To overcome the blast injuries, I had to undergo 22 surgeries and few more may follow going ahead. The list is too long for me to mention. The trauma and its effects live with me every moment. Fortunately, being more determined than most others, I decided to assist those who did not have the confidence to celebrate life. This is the reason why I wrote a book named Unbroken, which illustrates how strong we have been created by God and how weak we tend to behave in difficult situations. My sufferings could be lesser or more, or could be different from many other victims of such circumstances, but one thing which remains common among all of us is the pain. We, as victims of terrorism, often struggle to have our voices heard. The fear of being forgotten and the fright of the sufferings going unnoticed, I believe. Our stories are powerful tools. Our experiences must be shared with the people to guide them to respect humanity and togetherness and in turn, to achieve peaceful society, promote harmony, tolerance, and brotherhood. This in memoriam is convened to commemorate the victims of terrorism. It is the primary responsibility of the member states to support the victims of terrorism, to uphold and protect their rights, to help them recover from trauma, to fulfill their immediate and long-term requirements. Excellencies, to have this more prudent on the system, on behalf of the martyred victims, their families, and the surviving victims of terrorism, I request an appeal to the representatives of the member states, the distinguished dignitaries, and other authorities to accord the victims of terrorism with the same benefits as provided to the national security forces. It would truly help the victims of terrorism to cope with their difficulties, would help them to recover from physical, psychological, social, or financial hardships. I conclude while reiterating that we are the victims of an attack on humanity. It is a mission for peace, normalcy, and tranquility. It is my appeal to all the representatives of the states to ensure that there is no safe heaven provided to any kind of terrorism whatsoever. Being a prominent member and members and authorities... Sorry. Being a prominent member of the society, our participation in this mission would assist the members and authorities in making this world surely a better place to live. I pray to God that as we start to walk, let the path appear. Please support the victims of terrorism. Thank you.
Thank you, Nidhi. I now invite Karanbir Singh Kang to share his experience. Mr. Kang, you will all recall, was the general manager... Mr. Kang, you will all recall, was the general manager of this hotel when it was attacked on 26th November 2008. Mr. Kang, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Good morning. Honourable Minister Dr. Jayashankarji, distinguished dignitaries from the UN and all across the world. I must confess that I'm rather overwhelmed today standing here for in these very walls of this very hotel are etched the names of my brave colleagues, our guests and my family who perished during the 26-11 attacks. I was the general manager of this hotel when four terrorists armed with automatic weapons, RDX grenades stormed into our hotel with the sole intent of causing maximum damage and mayhem. That evening, it was two thousand guests and staff unarmed versus four heavily armed terrorists in this very place. My staff, they risked their lives to save our guests, assisted by a few local brave policemen over the next ten, twelve hours before we got help from the NSG. We lost staff in our kitchens, in our restaurants, in these very corridors. They took bullets and formed a human chain so that they could protect our guests who trusted us to do so. Atithi Devo Bhavu, which means guest is God, is not just a slogan for us. It is something that we live by and the world saw it that day. The bravery of my staff has become legendary and it's part of case studies at Harvard and various movies. They all acted in individual pockets of courage and bravery. Not a single staff member left his place. So the question that is often asked is how do you explain this? And all I would like to say is that I think it is the unique culture that binds us together of decades of culture that we see in the Taj and the Tata Group, of genuine care and giving back. We felt that our house was attacked, therefore we had to defend it. The, this Taj Mahal is our monument of love. Terrorism is not something that happens to other people in some other place. It is real and it can happen to anyone, anywhere. In an act of defiance, we opened the hotel mostly destroyed during those four days within twenty-one days. We were very inspired by what our chairman, Mr. Ratan Tata, then said. He said that we can be hurt, but we will not be knocked out. As a survivor who lost his colleagues and family, we all must take a stand with our individual acts of defiance of, against terrorism by fighting back in whatever we do in life and not giving up. My act of defiance was staying back and rebuilding this place for one and a half years. I would therefore urge the Security Council to defy these acts of terrorism by acting and cooperating resolutely against terrorism. In the end, as they say, it is our defiance that redeems us. Thank you.
Thank you, Karanbir, for your remarks. Your collective testimonies are a reminder that all acts of terrorism are criminal and unjustifiable regardless of their motivation, wherever, whenever and by whomsoever committed. The international community must remain united in its resolve to prevent and counter the scourge of terrorism in all its forms and manifestations. Before we move further in our programme, I would like to invite the ministers of India, Ghana, Gabon, the UK, UAE and Albania to come on stage for a group photograph with the victims of terrorism. I will also invite a very special guest, Ms. Veershali Tukaram Umbale, wife of the late Sri Tukaram Kamle, who courageously faced the terrorists of the Mumbai attack taking more than twenty bullets on his body while saving others. Thank you, Excellencies. Next, we have a presentation by Sri Pankaj Thakur, Joint Secretary, Government of India, providing a brief overview of the attack and the human aspects of the tragedy. Mr. Thakur, you have the floor.
Good morning, everybody. On November 26, ten L E T terrorists came to Mumbai via sea route and attacked the city. The mayhem lasted for about sixty hours. In the process, five static locations, including this hotel, were attacked besides three IED blast in taxis and incidents of indiscriminate firing on roads. In all, one sixty-six persons lost their lives, including twenty-six foreign nationals and three hundred and four others got injured. Investigations revealed that locations of attacks were chosen for iconic status, high civilian footfall and presence of foreigners and Jews. One of the key objectives behind these attacks was to keep L E T carders motivated for continued jihad against enemies of Muslim Ummah. Mumbai Police, National Security Guard and Marine Commandors cleared these locations and in the process, nine terrorists were killed while one was captured alive. Security Forces lost eighteen of its officers and men. For these events, forty-seven accused persons were charged by the Indian courts. Four accused persons could be arrested by Mumbai Police. The sole surviving assailant, Ajmal Kassab, was awarded capital punishment. The first attack was on Leopold Cafe that lasted for half an hour wherein two terrorists killed eleven civilians. Hotel Taj Palace was taken hostage by four other terrorists for about sixty hours in which thirty-six persons were killed. Two terrorists stormed the Sabad House, which witnessed nine deaths. Hotel Oberoi was subsequently taken hostage by two other terrorists for about forty-eight hours in which thirty-five persons were killed. Two terrorists lobbed hand grenades and opened fire at passengers at C S T railway platform, killing fifty-two of them. Subsequently, they entered nearby Kama Hospital and resorted to indiscriminate firing, targeting people in the road, killing sixteen persons in the process. As far as trajectory is concerned, the final leg of Mumbai terror attacks started with advanced training of the assailants in Musafirabad between June and August 2008. The assailants were trained for handling firearms, rocket launchers and map reading. They were addressed and given motivational speeches by Hafiz Saeed and Jakub Rahman Lakvi. It was followed by another specialised training at Muridke for about two months. Here, they were imparted training for hostage-taking, stronghold tactics and IED handling. Lakvi had frequent interactions with trainees here. In September 2008, the assailants were imparted marine training. It involved swimming, sea acclimatization, GPS-based navigation and handling inflatable boats. Here, for the first time assailants were involved, were informed of Mumbai being the target. On November 23, three days prior to the attack, assailants left from Mumbai from an isolated creek before they were shifted to another boat, Al Husani on high seas and were armed. On November 24, after twelve hours of travel, they captured an Indian boat, MB Kuver, while killing four crew members and capturing another for guiding them to Mumbai. On November 26, at around eighteen, thirteen hours, they used an inflatable dinghy to reach Mumbai source. As far as facilitation, investigations revealed that during the attack, assailants were in constant touch with their L E T handlers through CallPhonex V O I P services. V O I P services were hired by the user of karaktelco@yahoo.com. This email ID was accessed by three IPs across the border. Payment for V O I P services were made in October and November 2008 from foreign locations. The Yamaha engine of the dinghy was shipped from Japan to two locations across the border in September 2008. The five mobile sets seized from the assailants were shipped from Nokia factory in China to two mobile companies based across the border. Among the key conspirators was Hafiz Saeed, the main ideologue for the attack. During training, Hafiz Saeed motivated assailants for terror attack. Jakub Rahman Lakvi, the chief military commander of L E T, closely supervised terrorists' training. Sajid Mir, in charge of India's, L E T's India setup and was involved in selection of targets and conducting reconnaissance. During the attacks, he was present in the L E T control room directing the assailants. Abu Al Kaffa is a senior L E T trainer and was involved in every stage of the attack. He was also present in the L E T control room during the attack. Abdulaziz, the senior L E T operative, was instrumental in getting assailants familiarised with Mumbai and facilitation of communication. Major Iqbal of ISI was thickly involved with every aspect of the attacks and had provided funds and hardware for the reconnaissance exercise. Now I will like to apprise you with the intriguing, intrigue surrounding Sajid Mir, one of the key perpetrators of Mumbai terror attacks. In this voice clip which you are going to hear, he can be heard directing the assailants at Sabad House. He was one of the architects of the L E T's Denmark project to target Danish newspaper, its editor and cartoonist in Copenhagen. Fortunately, the planned attack was foiled in time. He was declared dead for long and even DNA test was produced to buttress this assertion. Owing to deeper international scrutiny, he finally was arrested and convicted in a terror financing case. As on date, his UN listing process however remains on hold. In the context of global fight against terrorism, I will like to finally flag challenges that needs to be surmounted. Despite even prescription and security scrutiny, there is hardly any dent in the intent, capacity or activities of Lashkar-e-Taiba or similar such outfits operating out of the epicentre of terrorism. While on the face of it, these outfits appear to be India-centric, they nurse aspirations that would pose serious threat to global community if not checked. There is a need therefore to strengthen the prescription and monitoring mechanism further to ensure that incidents like Mumbai terror attack and the entailing impunities are never witnessed anywhere in the world. One step in this direction could be to further qualify and rationalise the process of putting listing proposals on hold. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thakur. Excellencies, we will close this segment of commemoration of the victims of terrorism with a recording of a message that UN Secretary General, His Excellency Mr. Antonio Guterres, read out last week on 19th October from this very hotel's memorial site. The SG, many of you will recall, was on official visit to India on 18th, 19th October 2022.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, and through the media that are present, people of Mumbai and people of India. Terrorism is absolute evil. There are no reasons, no pretext, no causes, no grievances that can justify terrorism. Terrorism is absolute evil and terrorism has no room in today's world. So I feel deeply moved to be here where one of the most barbaric terrorist acts in history took place, where one hundred sixty-six people lost their lives. I want to pay tribute to the victims. They are heroes of our world. And I want to express my deepest condolences to their families, to their friends, to the people of India and to all those that coming from other parts of the world have lost their lives in Mumbai. Fighting terrorism must be a global priority for every country on earth and fighting terrorism is a central priority for the action of the United Nations. My first reform, when I became Secretary General, was to make the proposal of the creation of the Office of Counterterrorism, an office that is today in full strength able to cooperate with member states in order to provide the kind of assistance, training and advice that is necessary for all countries to be prepared to be able to prevent and simultaneously to fight against terrorist acts like the ones we have witnessed. And at the same time, this office is fighting the roots of violent extremism. There are no reasons to justify violent extremism, be it because of religion, because of ethnicity, because of whatever other belief that people might have. We need to attack those roots of violent extremism that try to provide justification so many times for terrorist acts. We need to be able to live with each other, to understand each other, to recognise that diversity is a richness and I mean one of the most diverse countries in the world. We need to stay together and we need to be much more effective in eliminating the root causes of terrorism and much more united in fighting terrorism in all its expressions and in making sure that terrorists will have no more place in our world. I want to thank the Indian government for the support it has been providing for all UN actions in the fight against terrorism and I want once again to express my deepest solidarity to those that were directly or indirectly affected by the barbaric act that took place here and in other places of this city. May I end with the same words that I have started. Terrorism is absolute evil. It is the duty of all of us to fight it without any kind of hesitation. Thank you very much.
In progression, it is my pleasure to begin the proceedings of the next item on our agenda, an informal briefing on combating terror financing in the local and regional contexts. To begin with, allow me to invite Dr. S. Jayashankar, External Affairs Minister of India, to give the inaugural address. Sir, you have the floor.
Your Excellency, Mr. Michael Musa Adama, Honourable Foreign Minister of the Gabonese Republic and President of the UN Security Council. Honourable Ministers, Heads of Delegations of the UN Security Council Member States. Your Excellency, Mr. Vladimir Warankov, UN Under-Secretary General for Counterterrorism, important civil society stakeholders who have traveled across the world for this briefing, Ambassador Ruchira Kamboch, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Let me begin by thanking all of you for traveling to Mumbai to attend this informal briefing of the Counterterrorism Committee of the UN Security Council today. Your presence here demonstrates the commitment that each one of you and your countries and all other stakeholders from various organizations have shown towards combating the common threat of terrorism. It expresses too our collective resolve at strengthening the multilateral efforts led by the United Nations to address this threat holistically and collectively. Terrorism is a serious threat to international peace and security, indeed to the entire humanity. We have heard the voices of its victims today. Their loss is immeasurable and can never be made up. However, it is incumbent on us as responsible members of the international community to remember their trauma and to persevere in our efforts to bring the perpetrators of terrorism to justice. We owe this to every victim of terrorism across the world. Even as the Mumbai terrorist attacks were unfolding on twenty-eighth November in two thousand and eight, the UN Security Council met and in one voice condemned this act of cross-border terrorism and said, I quote, "The members of the council underlined the need to bring perpetrators, organizers, financiers and sponsors of these reprehensible acts of terrorism to justice and urged all states to cooperate with Indian authorities in this regard." All acts of terrorism are criminal and unjustifiable regardless of their motivation. Now, in another month, we will be observing the fourteenth anniversary of these costly attacks on Mumbai in November two thousand and eight. While one of the terrorists was captured alive, prosecuted and convicted by the highest court in India, the key conspirators and planners of the twenty-six eleven attacks continue to remain protected and unpunished. When it comes to prescribing some of these terrorists, the Security Council has regrettably been unable to act in some cases because of political considerations. This undermines our collective credibility and our collective interest. A key aspect of combating terrorism is to effectively curb terror financing. Today, the Counterterrorism Committee will also be hearing from experts on countering financing of terrorism in the local and regional context. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we all know that money is the lifeblood of terrorism. Terrorist organizations require funds and resources to maintain their organizational functioning and undertake activities. The reality that terrorism continues to exist and expand points to an underlying truth that terrorism continues to get the necessary financial resources to thrive. In this regard therefore, I would like to make five points for the committee's consideration. One, effective and sustained efforts at countering terror financing is at the heart of the issue of countering terrorism. Normative efforts at the UN need to be coordinated through collaboration with other fora like the Financial Action Task Force, FATF and the Agmont Group. Two, we need to ensure that the effective and transparent functioning of the Security Council sanctions regime and make sure that they are not rendered ineffective for political reasons. Objective and evidence-based proposals for listing of terrorist groups, especially those that curb their access to financial resources, must be seen through. Three, international cooperation and concerted action against terrorists and their sponsors, including through dismantlement of terrorist safe havens, sanctuaries, training grounds and financial and ideological as well as political support structures, are critical imperatives to defeat this scourge. Four, terrorism's nexus with transnational organized crime, illicit drugs and arms trafficking is by now well-established. It is important that we recognize these linkages and strengthen multilateral efforts to break them. And five, over the years, terrorist groups have diversified their funding portfolio. They have also began to exploit the anonymity afforded by new and emerging technologies such as virtual currencies for fundraising and finances. In this regard, we look forward to the deliberations of the special meeting of the committee tomorrow in New Delhi to provide innovative solutions for the international community to consider. Terrorism may have plagued several regions of the world. We in India understand its cost more than others. But with that experience comes the stealing of national resolve. Decades of cross-border terror has not and will not weaken our commitment to fight back. Our real tribute to the victims will be to rededicate ourselves to combating and eliminating the menace of terrorism and this by stronger determination and joint action. We must rise above our political differences to address this scourge. The battle against terrorism must be fought resolutely at all fronts, all situations and all places. We cannot be found wanting in our efforts. As the UN Secretary General stated, terrorism is pure evil, one with which we can never compromise. I'm confident that today's briefing on this important aspect of combating terrorism will assist the international community in that direction. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, sir. We will now hear two presentations on countering the financing of terrorism. Let me first invite Sri Safi Rizvi, Joint Secretary, Government of India, for a presentation on countering the financing of terrorism in national and regional contexts. Mr. Rizvi, you have the floor.
While the system goes on, good afternoon, your excellencies. Thank you for this opportunity, ma'am. I will be bringing before you a short presentation on countering financing of terrorism and this we will detail in the context of India and in the context of India and the region, the South Asian region in which we are. And so the first slide I'd like to show you is basically a theoretical construct, a theoretical construct of how we in India take a look at combating financing for terrorism. Twenty years ago, in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and one, when the Security Council brought in those excellent resolutions, there was just no concept. Nobody knew that there was a concept of combating financing of terrorism. That entire paradigm was started just two decades ago and this presentation will show you how far it has taken the aspect of countering terrorism. So in India, we are beset with five types of conflict theatres. The first on the left side in the heading of the rows is Kashmir militancy, which has taken so many lives. Islamic terror, again cross-border Islamic terror, cross-border pro-Khalistan extremism in the western state of Punjab. Then northeast insurgencies, they've been there historically, many of them have been resolved, and left-wing extremism. So the reason why we are showing you this matrix is just to show that our security professionals have had to build completely separate kinds of paradigms, different kind of analytical structures to be able to deal with this kind of a terror. So the first three are the organized channels, banks, credit cards, debit cards and money value transfer services, which now has started including fintech services. Given India's speed of digitization, there are so many more fintech services that are now available. These buttons, the red ones, show you high risks that India faces. So quite obviously, it's the cash and hawala which has sustained. And one of the most important points that the global community needs to look at is that despite the fact that over the past two decades, anti-money laundering and countering financing of terror authorities have focused on trying to digitize everything, still cash and hawala remains the primary focus, the primary channel by which terrorists get their funds. So possibly it is the amount of stringent checks that we have in opening bank accounts and various other e-wallets and other things, maybe that is continuing to push these people into the world of cash and hawala. In the recent past, in India and in the rest of the world, we've seen the introduction of cryptocurrencies and drones. Drones is very specific to the Indian concept. This is something that will be deliberated on in detail tomorrow, so I will not focus much on this. However, as regards these buttons, cryptos is not much of a problem right now, but between cryptos and cash, digitization as in fintech services is something that does bother us and it has been seen as being used by many terrorist organizations. Drones is becoming a very serious problem in the last one and a half years, especially given that their source is from cross-border regions and the destination is our bordering states of Punjab and Kashmir. So we see great risk coming in the pro-Khalistan and the Kashmir side from drones. Just to highlight, now we move to, earlier we showed you channels of terror financing, now we are moving to sources of terror financing. So there are essentially seven sources that India focuses on. These are the ones that are medium or low risk. However, the high-risk ones, the ones that really bother India are arms trafficking in four theatres out of five, extortion, two theatres out of five and the biggest and the most troublesome is state sponsorship, which has basically taken over the interest of the entire counterterrorism community in India. So this is a theoretical construct. Behind each button that we have put in, there must be reams and reams of paper, reams and reams of investigators' notes and a lot of legal work that has been done to arrive at these buttons. They may appear to be very small and minor right now. Given the shortage of time, we thought it better to encapsulate everything in these two slides. Now I shall endeavor to show that the very presence of those two resolutions in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and one and successor resolutions, how effective they have been in the context of India. If they had not been there and UN designations did not exist, India today would not have had that window of relative peace that it saw for four years, which we will just show you. So in the concept of combating financing of terrorism was brought into the dictionary of terrorism by the United Nations, the FATF in the last ten years has become a very effective tool to implement those very designations. Without the UN, the FATF would have been ineffective and without the FATF, the UN would not have been able to enforce all its designations. With specific interest to India, two terrorist organizations, Jaishe Muhammad in two thousand and one and Lashkar-e-Taiba in two thousand and five were designated. Alongside nine India-focused terrorist individuals were designated and I will show you how these designations and FATF were able to make impact. There was a grey listing of a troublesome jurisdiction in twenty eighteen. So those four years from eighteen to middle of twenty-two saw relative peace. So there are four types of impacts of these designations plus FATF actions. Number one, all these UN-designated entities, the nine that I have mentioned, they were all arrested, prosecuted and convicted. Open terrorist activity was largely restricted, prescribed and not available anymore. Hard targets that were being attacked in India, that came down relatively. And finally, the terrorist bases that exist across the border reduced substantially. However, we'll now go to each specific impact. So the first impact, some of these photographs you have seen in my colleague's presentation previously, these eight terrorists were arrested and convicted. Zafer Iqbal for two hundred and eighty-three years cumulatively. However, all these sentences will run in parallel, so maybe he'll be out in ten to twelve years. And the ninth one, Masood Azhar, the one of great interest to India because he was sprung from an Indian prison in the year nineteen ninety-nine after an Indian Airlines plane was hijacked. Then he was the key person who was in touch with Osama bin Laden and very close to the Taliban leadership. In those years, in ninety-six to two thousand and one, the Taliban was an ascendant in Afghanistan. That is when the al-Qaeda found safe haven in Afghanistan and planned all those horrific attacks, nine eleven, the East Africa bombings of US embassies and that of USS Cole and several attacks in India. So this Masood Azhar has been convicted, but interestingly, the court has convicted him in absentia and he's not been arrested yet. However, this is the first impact of UN designations on terrorism. Second impact, open activity as in raising of funds on social media, Facebook, Twitter, which was very, very, which was almost always there on a daily basis, especially during certain festival times, has completely stopped after twenty eighteen, after the grey listing of a certain jurisdiction. Open public meetings of thousands of people. This gentleman who is marked out right now is not a gentleman. He is the UN-designated head of the Lashkar-e-Taiba, Hafiz Said. This is a photograph of twenty seventeen displayed prominently on social media, all of which had to, was forced to stop after the UN's designations were enforced by the FATF. This is another picture of one of those terrorists whose photographs I had shown earlier in the previous slide, who actually had a police escort. This is again a late twenty seventeen picture. By twenty eighteen, all this had stopped. Even now, we don't see very much of such open terrorist activity. Third impact, this is a map of the state of Jammu and Kashmir. So I'm discussing now hard targets. Hard targets means well-defended targets, government offices, military camps and police camps. So to attack a hard target, you need very well-trained terrorists, you need suicide bombers, you need people who have had training in terrorist camps for eight, nine, ten months or highly motivated. So five attacks we saw in the state of Kashmir in twenty fourteen, that moved up to eight the next year, fifteen the year after that, came down marginally to eight in twenty seventeen and went down to just three in twenty eighteen. We shall see why. Twenty nineteen, there was one aberration and a very big aberration, the Pulwama attack for which India had to conduct the Balakot airstrikes. Twenty twenty, there was no hard target attacked. Twenty twenty-one, again by the end of twenty twenty-one, these attacks started coming back and now in twenty twenty-two, we see them increasing. So just to summarize here, why did this decline happen from eighteen to twenty-one? Number one was grey listing by that troublesome jurisdiction based on which all the UN designations were enforced. Second was very detailed intelligence-led counterterrorism operations, which my colleague who spoke, he mentioned in detail. Third was the Balakot airstrikes, which also pushed the entire terrorist infrastructure to the side and then reading down of Article three seventy, which reduced any tendencies for secessionism. These four reasons were the reasons for the decline. However, a large portion of the credit goes to the designations and FATF. End twenty-one, when chances of delisting from the grey list started becoming fairly prominent and much talked about, we started seeing the return of terrorist infrastructure, cross-border terrorist infrastructure and the return of attacks on Indian targets. The fourth impact, what I had mentioned earlier about the terrorist bases, cross-border terrorist bases. So in mid of twenty eighteen, somewhere just close to the listing, there were nearly six hundred such terrorist bases across the border. They went down by seventy-five percent during the FATF listing. This we think is This, we think, is one of the most important successes on account of which the counterterrorism committee should take a deeper look as to how effective designations are. Then the moment the gray listing started, the talk started that the gray listing is about to end, which had ended now, it has gone up back by 50% and we are expecting more scalable, more attacks on hard targets, and much more trouble. So the four things we see since end 21, especially in this year. One, as is mentioned, cross-border terrorist camps are rising. Two, the flow of foreign terrorists into JNK. Till about two, three years ago, we had maybe a small flow, but now it's much more, about 60 to 70% of the current stock of terrorists available on our records and followed by the counterterrorism agencies. It must be about 60 to 70%. Attacks on soft targets have started again. This is a precursor to attacks on hard targets. And even migrant workers, poor people just walking on the street, religious minorities, Kashmir pundits are being killed. Five or six cases have already happened in this year. And finally, as I mentioned in the first slide on terror financing metrics, use of drones to ferry IEDs, a very, very large section of the equipment coming in from cross-borders through IEDs, small arms, and heroin to finance the entire terrorist network. So after showing these four impacts and then the however on how things have started sliding back in the last six, seven, eight months, just there's some very key lessons to be learned from the FATF model. It's a unique model. It's very different from normal multilateral bodies. Number one, if you compare it to the UN, the UN is a completely legal body which is available in every country's statutes, whereas FATF is entirely a voluntary body. The UN works on majority, whereas FATF works on consensus. By consensus, it has a positive also that everybody agrees and the negative is that a few countries can get together and gang up against another member. Then the UN is very transparent as everything is open, everything is recorded, everything is available for everyone to see. However, the FATF works in a completely classified fashion. And then the UN works on formal sanctions, discussed, debated, ad nauseam, whereas FATF works on ostracism, that if one member is not doing things right and 38 others think he's not, then that person is cast out of the financial system. So maybe a leaf can be taken out of the FATF model and we can, the monitoring team that is set up by the UN's sanction committee, it does a fantastic job of its six monthly reports where it archives in detail and very, very A-class detail and latest details archived. Just a simple thing like an advisory page could be added. An advisory page which suggests due diligence on transactions. There are many forms of due diligence on transactions, international transactions. It could be enhanced due diligence, it could be light-touch due diligence. There are various categories which can be devised. Thirdly, you can think of a country or entity-wise classification as in a red, blue, yellow, any kind of clarification, classification. And a copy of each of these advisories could be addressed to central banks and with a request for compliance. Having worked in the FATF system for several years now, this simple method is bound to make a lot of difference and will definitely give greater results. Second, considering the effectiveness, as we have just shown, of just nine terrorist designations and of two entities, there has been so much impact, there are many more designations are required. As EAM, India's Foreign Minister, mentioned, very professional listing, enlisting and delisting is the best way forward. The External Affairs Minister of India had suggested an eight-point action plan in January 2021, which sir had just summarized in five points. This was the plan that was submitted in January 2021. And with one last slide, I will leave you as a kind of tribute to the victims of terror in this country. For the past 30 years, three decades now, starting with Mumbai, where we had serial blasts in this very city, which nobody really now remembers or talks about. 2611 is the most talked about. 15 years before that, in 1993, 13, 14 serial blasts had taken place and 300 people had died in this very city. That's when terror started, that's when cross-border terror started, that's when India's troubled neighborhood and what was happening in Afghanistan at that time, post-1989, is when it started affecting India. These are the attacks that India has faced over the years. All are iconic targets, like the Red Fort in Delhi was attacked, the Jammu and Kashmir Assembly was attacked, the parliament, Indian Parliament was attacked just seven days after Osama bin Laden was encircled in the Thora Bora caves after Operation Enduring Freedom had started. Similarly, there were several other attacks and I just leave you with this huge list of 17 cases, which is not the entire universe of cases that India has faced, just to show you how difficult a place we are in, the difficulty of the counterterrorism professionals in India, and the request that we keep making to the counterterrorism committee on designations, how effective that can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rizvi. I will now invite Svetlana Martinova, Senior Legal Officer at the Counterterrorism Committee Executive Directorate, to give the UN CTED's perspective on the dynamic nature of terror financing, particularly in the South Asia region. Svetlana, you have the floor.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And before I begin, allow me to express my gratitude to the Government of India for the hospitality accorded to us all and to the permanent mission of India to the United Nations for inviting me to speak in this session. It is an honor to be addressing you today on the matter of countering the financing of terrorism, or CFT as we call it for short, in this region. As many of you would recall, monitoring compliance with the CFT-related requirements of Security Council resolutions has been within the core mandate of the Counterterrorism Committee since its very inception in 2001 and consequently became one of the key focused areas of the work of its Executive Directorate, or CTED, which is also the body that continuously analyzes evolving terrorism financing trends and methods, CFT responses, gaps, and good practices, as well as any potentially negative impacts of CFT measures on civic space, human rights, legitimate activity of nonprofit sector, and exclusively humanitarian activity. Zooming into the region of South Asia, CTED has recently assessed that the states of this sub-region have overall made good progress addressing their CFT regime deficiencies. All South Asian states have enacted standalone offenses covering the financing of terrorism in their criminal laws. And where any outstanding shortcomings persist, they're being addressed through the relevant procedures within the Financial Action Task Force and its relevant regional bodies. All states of this sub-region have functioning financial intelligence units, although some remain under-resourced in terms of stuffing and equipment. With respect to freezing of terrorist funds, the framework mechanisms are mostly in place, but their effectiveness varies from one country to another. In terms of terrorism financing threats, and this is consistent with the overall global trends, some of the regional terrorist groups have increased their financial resources from engaging in kidnapping, extortion, drugs trafficking, and other forms of crime as mentioned by speakers before me. In several instances, charitable organizations have been exploited to finance terrorist acts in the region. Elaborating further on vulnerabilities and as highlighted in our 2021 Global Implementation Survey, many South Asian states have large informal and cash-based economies. As also just highlighted by the esteemed speaker before me, cash and alternative money remittance services continue to prevail in terms of methods terrorists use to store and move funds. In this region too, unregistered money remitters remain one of the most prevalent transfer means for terrorist purposes. Some groups continue to abuse the regulated financial system, exploiting persistent loopholes in AML/CFT regulation and enforcement. In addition, many terrorist groups in the region continue to rely on hawala-like channels. The majority of the states here need to further strengthen the capacity of their customs officers to prevent and detect the illicit cross-border movement funds via cash couriers. At the same time, there is also an overall increase in the use of these traditional methods of financing in combination with the new and emerging payment technologies, including mobile payments, virtual assets, online exchanges and wallets, as well as social media and crowdfunding platforms. These emerging financial technologies can be vulnerable to abuse by terrorist financiers, especially in the absence of proper regulation and enforcement measures, which should be based on a rigorous assessment of risks, impacts, and outcomes. Several states in these regions have not yet conducted such assessments nor introduced legal and operational measures required by the Security Council resolutions and the international standards set by the FATF. There is also a persistent issue of capacity, which is by far not unique for this region compared to others, but just still as relevant. Successfully tracking cyberfinancial flaws does require advanced technological capabilities, both in terms of trained human resources and the necessary hardware and software. A number of challenges remain in the detection, investigation, and prosecution of terrorism financing, especially when it requires collection and analysis of digital forensic evidence and involves several jurisdictions. On this specific topic, I would again refer you to the 2021 Global Implementation Survey analysis and its regional spotlight dedicated to the increased use of e-evidence in South Asia. The capacity issue also affects how countries prioritize addressing terrorism, among other security threats, and terrorism financing in particular, especially when it comes to complex technical legislative and operational reforms. Unable to keep with the pace of the evolving technologies, certain countries choose to either ban them altogether, while also often failing to enforce those bans, or leave them under-regulated, creating the so-called gray areas. I would like to end on a more optimistic note, however. First, to highlight the unprecedented innovations and opportunities that technological progress brings to all of us. And second, to underscore the solid work already done in developing international standards that are effective in preventing and countering the financing of terrorism, provided they are implemented with full awareness of the threats and in full compliance with the international law, including human rights law. On our side, we will continue to support all member states in implementing the standards, sharing their expertise and good practices, and jointly reflecting on any remaining challenges. I thank you for your attention and once again, our hosts for their remarkable hospitality. Thank you.
Thank you, Svetlana. Thank you, Svetlana. I now open the floor for interventions and statements from the current and incoming members of the UN Security Council. It is my honor to invite His Excellency, Mr. Michael Musa Adamo, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Gabon, to deliver his statement. Excellency, may I invite you to the podium?
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, dear colleagues, it is an honor and a real pleasure and a privilege, on behalf of my delegation, to express to the government people of the sisterly Republic of India, all our thanks and all our gratitude for the special arrangements to which we have been subject to since we arrive in this beautiful and friendly country. Madam Chair, my presence in this crucial debate reaffirms the full solidarity and manifest interest of my country Gabon to contribute to the fight against terrorism and the violent extremism that is rampant in all regions of the world, including the available means and resources that contribute to their growing power. Our meeting today addresses one of the major issues for peace, stability, and sovereignty of our states. Indeed, the question of terrorism, violent extremism, the financing of terrorism, as well as the use of emerging technologies for the purpose of extreme violence, take on particular resonance at a time when certain regions of the world, and Africa in particular, are confronted with the acts of armed groups and transnational crimes. This is an opportunity to pay tribute to the civilian and military victims of terrorism throughout the world, victims whom we can raise as heroes because they risked or lost their lives demonstrating that our states must multiply and combine their efforts to contain, if not eradicate, this scourge. In Africa, terrorist act affects deeply the lives of citizens and weaken our societies. The victims of this phenomenon continue to grow, causing significant movements of internally displaced persons and refugees. The other correlate to this weakening is the difficulty experienced by some of our states in deploying on all of its international borders and exercising its sovereignty prerogatives there. This absence of the state, combined with the lack of governance, most often creates political instability which sees the emergence of actors whose presence destabilizes the life and institutions in the long term. Madam Chair, dear colleagues, the financing of terrorism also remains a major challenge for our states. Terrorist organizations need funds, materials, personal and public opinion to carry out their illegal activities. Terrorist financing involves the mobilization and processing of assets that provide terrorists with the resources to carry out their activities. In addition, terrorists depend on international financial system to carry out their action, organize themselves, and carry out their attacks. Madam Chair, the internet and social media platforms obviously have many advantages, but can now be used to facilitate communication within terrorist organizations, convey information about planned acts of terrorism, and provide material supports for such acts. Ultimately, the link between terrorism, violent extremism, terrorism financing, and the use of emerging technologies, internet and social media, requires a new approach to governance and collective security. This is an opportunity to strengthen our instruments in fighting against the sub-discurge by promoting, in particular, enhancing cooperation of our intelligence capabilities by pooling our national, sub-regional, regional, and international defense resources, the involvement of peoples through a new citizenship, which necessarily involves access to education for the underprivileged strata of society. It is an essential element in the appropriation of collective security and participation in global choices for our states. My country strongly condemns terrorism, any other related act, as well as the means and resources used to achieve it. It is to support the collective effort that Gabon is, it is to support the collective efforts that Gabon has ratified almost all the international and sub-regional instruments in the fights against terrorism and takes this threat into account in Law No. 102, 2008, July 5, 2019, on our penal code. During its mandate on the Security Council, Gabon has reservefully supported the work of the sanctions committees as well as the measures enacted by the relevant Security Council resolution sanctioning individuals and entities involved in our supporting, involved or supporting the terrorism and urge the strict application of relevant provision of the Security Council resolution to one... to 19 of 2015 regarding the reduction of sources of funding for the criminal networks. The military response cannot be exclusive. This position remains constant and permanent for Gabon. Madam Chair, dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to salute the tireless support of the various partners, support without which the objective set in fighting against terrorism cannot be achieved. Furthermore, my delegation and I reaffirm our support for the choice of this theme. This choice reinforces the idea that the world must continue to reflect on its priorities against all forms of insecurity, find holistic solutions combining local approaches and the improvement of cooperation, not without insisting understanding of solidarity and resilience in the face of the persistence of scourges that hampered global stability. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Excellency, for your statement. I would now like to invite Her Excellency, Ms. Shirley Ayoka Bocce, Minister for Foreign Affairs and Regional Integration of Ghana, to deliver her statement. Excellency, may we invite you to the podium.
Your Excellency, Madam Chair, the Honorable Minister for Foreign Affairs of Gabon, Minister Moussa Adamo, the Honorable Minister of External Affairs of India, colleague ministers, Mr. Vladimir Voronkov, Under-Secretary General for Counterterrorism, your excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Let me begin by thanking you, Dr. Jayshankar, the Honorable Minister of External Affairs of India, for the invitation to participate in this informal briefing on combating terrorism financing in the local and regional context. The hosting of this event in Mumbai is a symbolic expression of India's commitment to fighting international terrorism, based on its own tragic experience with terrorism. Terrorism continues to pose a grave threat to international peace and security. It is indeed the most complex and challenging security issue today. No single country can adequately respond to the challenging security situation that we face, and this is the reason why we have gathered here today. It is only through continued cooperation that the international community will be able to tackle a problem which transcends geographical borders. Disrupting and drying up the financial transaction flows of terrorists is an effective way to support the global war on terrorism. Disrupting terrorism financing not only denies terrorists precious resources, but also provides information on their activities. Disrupting the flow of funds between the source and distribution points weakens the ability for these groups to succeed. Based on our experience in the Sahel and coastal West Africa, we understand how crucial intra-regional and cross-regional intelligence sharing is encountering cross-border collaboration movement and the operation of these terrorist groups. That is why Ghana has been an active leader for the most responsive information and intelligence sharing among West African nations through what we call the AKRA Initiative. The AKRA Initiative is now ECOWAS's platform for intelligence and information sharing on questions of terrorism, transnational organized crime, and violent extremism as we scale up our cooperation to defeat the terrorist groups threatening our people and our states. Ghana also believes that it is critical to deepen regional cooperation to cut off terrorism financing. In the ECOWAS region, the intergovernmental group of action against money laundering in West Africa, GIABA, has since its establishment in 2000 facilitated the adoption and implementation of anti-money laundering AML and counter-financing of terrorism, CFT laws, in West Africa. It is also a financial action task force styled regional body, working with its member states to ensure compliance with international AML/CFT standards. While GIABA's collaboration with national financing intelligence centers has produced significant outcomes, its actions would continue to require deepening against non-banking transfer systems that terrorist groups are known to use. It is important to encourage the convergence of understanding or normative frameworks on the fight against terrorism. Ghana is committed to this endeavor, and we have ratified all international treaties against terrorism and terrorist acts. In advancing our efforts towards preventing terrorism, we have enacted, among other legislations, the Anti-Money Laundering Act to comprehensively deal with terrorist financing, as well as the Anti-Terrorism Act, Act 762 of 2008, which criminalizes terrorist financing and material support for terrorists. Ghana's experiences in countering terrorism are also demonstrated in the government's efforts to build a resilient and cohesive society, including through appropriate education and situational awareness at the local level, and provision of social and other services which are needed to ensure inclusion and social security. It is important that I stress that the ability of developing countries to make the necessary investments and build the institutional structures for early warning, for monitoring, and for disruption, while at the same time engaging in kinetic operations against terrorists, is negatively affected by the headwinds our economies face. On the other hand, we need to make greater progress in realizing the SDGs, which are a crucial underpinning for countering radicalization and recruitment. Ghana therefore calls for stronger partnerships across board through development cooperation between the United Nations and counterinsurgency operations and regional arrangements, including the African Union's normative frameworks for preventing and combating terrorism, as well as ECOWAS's counterterrorism strategy. We need support from partners for intra-regional and cross-regional intelligence sharing to enable us to halt the cross-border collaboration by terrorist groups. In this regard, we commend the efforts of the United Nations and its subsidiaries, including the Counterterrorism Executive Directorate and the United Nations Office on Drugs and Crimes, for their enduring efforts in leading the fight against terrorism. In conclusion, we strongly urge member states to support multilateral cooperation, to build a united front to end terrorism in all its forms and manifestation. I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Excellency. I will invite His Excellency, Mr. James Cleverly, Secretary of State for Foreign, Commonwealth, and Development Affairs of the United Kingdom, to deliver his remarks. Excellency, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, your excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Today, we remember the 166 people who were killed when terrorists attacked Mumbai in 2008, and the countless others who were injured in that attack. I express my deepest condolences to all the victims and their families. Among them were three British nationals, and on behalf of His Majesty's Government, I honor and remember them today. This morning's ceremony reminds us of the human cost and the global impact of terrorism, and it reminds us why we must remain united and steadfast in our efforts to defeat it. Fourteen years ago, the United Nations Security Council condemned all acts of terrorism, regardless of their motivation, and pledged to combat this threat to international peace and security. The UK's determination to honor that pledge remains unwavering. And it's not just about vigilance and security focused on those that carry out terrorism. We know, we understand, that depriving terrorists of the funds to carry out such attacks, the funds to maintain their network, and the funds to recruit new members is one of the most effective tools against them. In the United Kingdom, detecting, preventing, and disrupting terrorist finance is a key strand of our defenses. We have a strong legislative framework, and our law enforcement agencies have wide-ranging powers to pursue terrorist financing. It is also a key strand of our counterterrorism cooperation with our international partners. As members of the United Nations Security Council Counterterrorism Committee, we have a special responsibility to protect and promote human rights in all our counterterrorism work. Madam Chair, your excellencies, colleagues, friends, I thank you, and I thank our hosts for organizing this important meeting and for putting victims at the heart of our work. And I pay tribute to India's leadership in the fight against terrorism over all these years, and I look forward to our further discussions over this weekend. We are here because we know that counterterrorism cooperation must continue to adapt and to evolve to match the new threats and emerging technologies. We must do all we can to prevent attacks like the one that took place here in Mumbai from ever happening again. That tragedy, and each of the victims that we remember today, remind us why our resolve must never waver, and that what we do here today matters so very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your excellency. We will now play a video statement by Mr. Antony Blinken, Secretary of State of the United States of America.
Thank you, Ministers Jaisankar, for convening this important meeting and for India's leadership on terrorism and counterterrorism. Not only is the Chair of the United Nations 1373 Counterterrorism Committee, but also of the 1988 Taliban Sanctions Committee, as well as the robust engagement in the 1267 Committee on ISIL and Al Qaeda. As we mark fourteen years since the horrific attacks of November 26th, we join people in India and around the world in mourning the lives lost. One hundred and forty-one Indians, six Americans, and victims from fifteen other countries, from every region of the world, as well as many Mumbaikars, Americans, and others wounded with scars visible and invisible. We stand in solidarity with the people of India and all nations that lost people on that day. But we must do more than mourn. We have a responsibility to the victims and to people everywhere to bring justice to the perpetrators of the Mumbai attacks, including their masterminds. That's what the United States has been working to do, together with India and other partners for the last fourteen years. Because when we allow the architects of these attacks to go unpunished, we send a message to terrorists everywhere that their heinous crimes will be tolerated. Many members of the Security Council, including the United States, have adopted our own sanctions against the terrorists behind these attacks. But our accountability efforts are more effective when we act together, which is why we've worked with India to put forward nominations to designate several terrorists through the UN 1267 Committee. All relevant parties should support these designations. No nation should stand in their way. Beyond ensuring full accountability for 2611, we also have a responsibility to prevent future attacks like it. That requires addressing new and emerging threats, such as terrorists increasing abuse of technologies in the internet to finance and plan attacks, store assets, and radicalize and recruit members. The United States is working with the private sector to address these vulnerabilities, from getting financial technology companies to enhance and enforce policies aimed at preventing their illicit use, to helping platforms ensure that they're not hosting terrorist content and spreading hate. But we can't do it alone, and we're ready to work with all governments, multilateral bodies, and companies in this effort. Minister Jaisankar, fellow Council members, as we reflect on the immeasurable loss of 2611, let it be a reminder to all of us of our unfinished work in holding accountable the perpetrators of its horrors and averting future terrorist attacks like it on any of our people, anywhere. Thank you.
I thank Secretary Blinken for his statement, and I now invite Her Excellency, Ms. Reem Ibrahim Al Hashemi, Minister of State for International Cooperation of the United Arab Emirates, to deliver her statement. Excellency, I invite you to the podium.
Excellencies, dear friends and colleagues, I'd like to thank the government of India for hosting us and organizing this meeting. The symbolism of gathering in Mumbai today and in this very hotel that has suffered from a terrorist attack and has shown incredible resilience, defiance, and resolve in the face of such a tragedy is the very least that we can all do. I'd also like to spend a moment to thank the survivors who shared their stories and relived their experiences. These are deeply human experiences, and to truly honor you, we must commit to doing more in the fight against terrorism and extremism. As you all know, earlier this year, on January 17, the Houthi terrorist group targeted civilian infrastructure in the United Arab Emirates. Sadly, three people lost their lives. So whether in India or Brussels, as we've heard from Ms. Chapikar, or the United Arab Emirates, terrorism knows no borders and shatters lives indiscriminately. Dear friends, let us use this opportunity and honor the victims and survivors of terrorism by mobilizing our political will and technical capabilities at the national, regional, and multilateral level to truly address this evil. We've been invited here to reflect on local and regional perspectives on countering the scourge, and with this in mind, I'd like to touch on several aspects of the financing of terrorism which my country has enforced. First, the United Arab Emirates has undertaken concerted efforts in addressing terrorist financing and illicit finance, and has implemented effective regulations on anti-money laundering and counterfinancing of terrorism, which both remain a key priority through our constant dialogue with FATF. And we commit to taking even more measures to ensure that our domestic framework remains strong and resilient in this strong and resilient in this ever-changing and fluid environment. Finance enables, and we must address this all collectively. Second, under the auspices of the League of Arab States, we’ve developed an Arab-regional counterterrorism strategy. The framework’s design takes into account regional instruments, as well as international standards and norms, including human rights and the rights of women and children. It also provides recommendations and operational guidelines to support member states of the Arab region to effectively prevent extremism and counterterrorism. Political, educational, and socio-economic factors feature prominently in this comprehensive strategy to address the challenges in a multi-dimensional way. And finally, we must draw a closer and tighter link between the danger of extremism and hate language to terrorist activity. We all saw and heard what happened in the Nairiman House, and we’re all too familiar with how radical thoughts lead to radical practices, and therefore, a clear and concerted effort to target the innocents must be deployed. Ladies and gentlemen, the threat of terrorism is ever-evolving. Traditional and non-traditional means, physical and digital mechanisms are constantly being deployed, and for us to truly be able to target and conquer, our responses have to be determined, innovative, flexible, and tailored to the different contexts in which terrorist activity percolate. The stability of our countries and communities, and indeed, the entire world, and the future generation depends on that. Thank you all very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Excellency, for your statement. I will now turn to my colleagues on this horseshoe table. First, Mr Eduardo Paez Saboya, Secretary for Asia-Pacific and Russia at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Brazil. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Excellencies. I commend the Government of India for hosting this special meeting on the Counterterrorism Committee of the Security Council, and for organising this well-thought tribute to the victims of terrorism, and for giving voice to the survivors of the Mumbai attacks. You must never forget the utter injustice that befalls every one of them. Each personal tragedy must be remembered. Every life lost must be mourned. I extend my sincere condolences to the families, loved ones, and governments of all victims of the terrorist acts that took place here in two thousand and eight. Support to victims of terrorism and their families must be central to any counterterrorist policy. We should make all efforts in protecting their rights and addressing their specific needs. Brazil strongly condemns terrorism in all its forms and manifestations. It is a principle enshrined in our constitution: no reasons can justify a terrorist act. Brazil’s repudiation of terrorism has been translated into concrete action. In the past years, our national legislation has been updated to match the challenges of preventing and countering terrorism and its financing, and Brazilian agencies are working tirelessly to implement it. To prevent terrorism from further killing innocent civilians, we must address its root causes. We must understand the circumstances in which terrorist groups thrive, the reasons why their ideology attracts young people to their ranks, as well as the social, economic, and development aspects of the phenomenon. This meeting will give us an opportunity to reflect on how new and emerging technologies can contribute to the fight against terrorism. It will also help us broaden our knowledge on how terrorist groups make use of them to bypass controls and finance their activities and members. Depriving them of resources is key to thwart their actions. Our concerted counterterrorism actions can benefit from the discussions to be held here in Mumbai and in New Delhi. Brazil looks forward to this exchange of ideas and information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Vladimir Tarabrin, Special Representative of the Minister for Foreign Affairs of the Russian Federation on International Cooperation on Countering Terrorism, and the Director of the Department on New Challenges and Threats, Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Russian Federation, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Honourable Ministers, dear colleagues, let me express Russia’s appreciation to the Indian Government for convening the special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee and inviting us to the related events, including today’s emotional ceremony of paying tribute to the victims of terrorism. We deeply mourn the victims of terrorist attacks in Mumbai. India, as well as my country, has had a bitter experience of a terrorist attack and its consequences. It goes without saying that such horrible acts cannot be justified while their perpetrators must be held accountable. We join our voice to the solidarity of international community with victims of terrorism and emphasise the importance for national governments to support people suffered from terrorist attacks and address their needs in social rehabilitation. Significance of such assistance could be hardly overestimated. In Russia, we elaborated and actively implement a wide range of relevant measures, including compensation of damage. We also commend the convening in September, the first United Nations Global Congress of Victims of Terrorism, while being an active participant of the United Nations Group of Friends of Victims of Terrorism. Russia has consistently advocated for a broad international coalition against terrorism, with the participation of all states concerned, acknowledging the central and coordinating role of the United Nations. It is crucial to build international cooperation in this area on a solid basis of international law, including United Nations Charter, relevant United Nations Security Council resolutions, as well as universal conventions and protocols, avoiding politicisation and double standards. Today, there is an urgent need to intensify our collective efforts to suppress ideological, material, and financial support to terrorists. Terrorist financing landscape remains very dynamic. Terrorists quite skillfully and promptly adapt to the new realities and seek profit from the development of new technologies. The growing use of digital currencies, online payment systems, and crowdfunding platforms provides new channel for terrorist financing. The anonymity afforded by such technologies enables terrorist financiers to avoid, or just to make more, to obfuscate their activities and to disguise their dealings as legitimate networks of commerce and cross-border transactions. Despite the spread of new payment systems and the most innovative financial instruments, traditional mechanisms of financing terrorism, such as cash couriers and hawala providers, are still the most common methods of transferring funds to and from terrorists. The international community should unanimously demonstrate absolute determination to address the risks of terrorism funding in every area and place. In this regard, we call on all countries for effective implementation of relevant United Nations Security Council resolutions aimed at strengthening mechanisms for combating sources and channels for terrorist financial support. We would like to once again express our gratitude to Indian endeavours in promoting international cooperation on counterterrorism, allowing us to make such a comprehensive glance at countering the use of new and emerging technologies for terrorist purposes, focusing on combined consideration of ICT financing and unmanned aerial systems. We are looking forward to continuing fruitful and timely discussions of these urgent topics during the main CTS meeting tomorrow. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. I will now give the floor to Ambassador Olivier Carron, Special Envoy for Counterterrorism, France.
Thank you. Dear Doctor Jashankar, External Affairs Minister of India, dear Mrs Chair, Ambassador Roshira Kamboj, dear Ministers, Excellencies, and dear colleagues, please let me start by thanking India for its commitment in the fight against terrorism and for welcoming us today. Allow me also, on behalf of the highest French authorities, to thank you for giving us the opportunity today, all together, from this symbolic place, to pay a solemn tribute to the victims of the Bombay attacks, during which two of my compatriots lost their lives. Let us also pay a tribute to all victims of terrorism, deceased and injured, and also to those who helped and assisted them. The testimonies we heard today bear witness to the destructive impact of terrorism on the lives of our citizens. France has never, and will never relent from its fright against the plague of terrorism, be it within its own borders or abroad, together with our European and international partners. And in this connection, I wish to recall that the fight against terrorism is one of the structural axes of our strategic partnership with India. Given the evolving, ever-evolving nature of the threats we are facing, especially in the digital space where we have to fight against radicalisation on social media, we have to adapt our tools to fight and prevent terrorism. Yet, countering terrorism finance remains an absolutely central plank of national and international endeavours against this scourge, in which France is pleased to take the initiative, and especially has taken initiative with the resolution for twenty-four sixty-two, and will be happy to continue working with international partners with regard to the different international regimes. France also remains committed in Africa, especially in the Sahel region, alongside its partners in the framework of the Sahel Coalition and the Sahel Alliance, to bring lasting security, stability, and development to thwart the enabling factors of terrorism. In the Middle East, within the International Coalition Against Daesh, we have contributed to defeating the territorial caliphate of Islamic State, but we’ll have to continue the fight against its last remaining elements. Given the transnational nature of the challenges posed by terrorism, multilateral action is absolutely, absolutely key. As the UN Secretary General said in twenty-one, “A terrorist attack against one country is an attack against the whole of humanity.” It is only together, through multilateral action, that we can build lasting and shared solutions rooted in the respect of international law, human rights, and fundamental freedoms. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. I now turn to Mr Brendan Ward, the Ambassador of Ireland to India.
Madam Chair, Honourable Ministers, Excellencies, distinguished colleagues, almost fourteen years ago, this great city witnessed violence on a truly horrifying scale. During a siege lasting over sixty hours, over a hundred and sixty people were killed and hundreds more seriously injured. News of the two thousand and eight Mumbai attacks, including attacks at this very site, reverberated not only throughout India but far beyond, shocking the conscience of the world. Ireland stood in solidarity with the Government of India and people of India then, and we do so again today. We firmly reject terrorism in all parts of the world. Today is a solemn occasion, a day in which the Counterterrorism Committee members remember and pay tribute to all victims and survivors of terrorism, especially those affected by the two thousand and eight attacks here in Mumbai. From our own history of conflict on the island of Ireland, we know that the trauma of terrorism runs deep, that wounds, both physical and psychological, take time to heal, and that recovery is neither easy nor linear. But while the effects on society as a whole can be devastating, it is individuals who feel the impact most acutely, as the moving testimony of survivors here today demonstrated. Our words today must therefore be matched by our deeds. Today must be a call to action for all victims and survivors of terrorism. We, the members of the Counterterrorism Committee, must engage with and respond to the needs of victims and survivors, support their needs, and uphold their human rights. We can do more, and we should do more. Today’s memorial service also reminds us that it is our shared humanity that binds us together, all individuals in all nations. When terrorists seek to test those bonds, I recall an old Irish proverb, “Ninyartika kurlekeela”, there is no strength without unity. Looking forward, my hope is that we, the members of the Counterterrorism Committee, use this gathering to unite in common purpose, and guided by our values and principles, work together in compliance with international law, and in particular, with international human rights law, to address the scourge of terrorism. This is surely the least we owe to the countless victims and survivors of terrorism. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I now turn to Mr Wily Bet, the High Commissioner of Kenya to India.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Excellencies, Honourable Ministers, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. Allow me, on behalf of Kenya’s delegation, to commend and thank you, the Government of India, for convening this meeting. Having just relived the twenty-eleven horrendous acts of terror perpetrated on these very premises, we are reminded of the stark reality of the threat of terrorism on all of us, and the pressing need for stronger collaborative efforts to confront this scourge with renewed urgency, vigour, and determination. The Mumbai attacks represent the series of brutal and vile scenes that continue to play out across the world, piling up grave pain to families who have to endure the tragedy of losing or having their loved ones injured in terror attacks. Kenya commiserates with the families, the government, and the people of India for the thousands of innocent lives cut short and livelihoods destroyed. As a country that has suffered similar atrocities by the al-Shabaab terrorist groups, we stand in solidarity with you in your endeavour to strengthen national, regional, and global counterterrorism efforts to ensure that the twenty-sixth eleven never happens again As we have done on many previous occasions, we condemn in all uncertain terms terrorism in all its forms and manifestations, wherever it happens or perpetrated. There can be no justifications whatsoever, whether political, ideological, or other basis, for any acts of terrorism. Today’s events also remind us that the trail of every terror attack, humans are the victims. We must never forget them. Let us help them to rebuild their lives, and let us meaningfully incorporate them in the fight against terrorism and violent extremism. This will enhance effectiveness of rehabilitation tools such as psychological counselling, training programmes, and provision of skills needed. Excellencies, distinguished delegates, by exploiting new technologies, terrorist groups are increasingly expanding their financial streams, including through illegal taxation, extortion... extortion, transfers to strengthen their operational capabilities. Factual currencies or cryptocurrencies are also emerging as the conduits for money laundering and terrorism financing. It is crucial that member states are able not only to develop but also effectively implement and demand the money laundering and countering the financing of terrorism measures. But this will only be successful where there is close cooperation and collaboration between national law enforcement agencies and regional mechanisms working closely with the UN entities, including UNOCT and UNODC. This is key for state to enable them disrupt and dismantle the revenue infrastructure that terrorist groups are tapping to sustain their inious activities. Finally, multi-agent approach and information sharing among states should be improved in order to create robust institutions and devise better ways to monitor the exploitation of otherwise beneficial technologies to commit crime. I conclude by expressing our deep gratitude to the government and the people of India for the warm hospitality extended to all of us since our arrival to this wonderful city of Mumbai. I thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will now give the floor to the Ambassador of Mexico to India, Mr. Federico Salas Lotfi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, excellencies, distinguished delegates, and participants in this special meeting. We would like to thank the government of India for hosting this important meeting on a topic of global relevance. We believe that this meeting will be a space for dialogue and exchange of knowledge and lessons learned amongst the members of the Security Council in order to promote multilateral efforts to prevent and combat terrorism, as well as to address the challenges arising from the misuse of technologies, recognizing the need to balance the promotion of innovation and the positive impact of new technologies. Mexico reaffirms its strong condemnation of terrorism in all its forms and manifestations and the extremist ideologies that emanate from this phenomenon. Mexico is committed to fully implementing a multilateral architecture to prevent and combat terrorism in line with international law, in particular, human rights law and international humanitarian law. Mexico has promoted multilateral cooperation to counterterrorism at its root by preventing and addressing its structural causes, as well as the violent extremism that can lead to terrorism. I would like to share with you that Mexico chairs the Inter-American Committee Against Terrorism, CICTE, of the Organization of American States for the period 2022-2023. Through this platform, Mexico supports the strengthening of regional capacities, as well as the exchange of experiences and best practices with a high priority on the issues related to cybersecurity, civil aviation security, the security of crowded spaces, including tourist destinations and major events, supply chain security, and the prevention of violent extremism that can lead to terrorism. At the national level, Mexico established a high-level specialized committee on disarmament, terrorism, and international security fifteen years ago. This body brings together and coordinates the work of relevant Mexican institutions involved in this area to effectively comply with our international commitments in the areas of disarmament, terrorism, and other issues related to international security. Finally, we reaffirm our willingness to work together with all member states and other relevant stakeholders to develop innovative ideas and joint efforts to address terrorism and its new manifestations that threaten the security of all states. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I give the floor now to Ms. May Ellen Stener, Deputy Director General for Africa, Asia, Latin America, and the Middle East at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Norway. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ministers, excellencies. Let me start by thanking the government of India for hosting this special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee, and particularly for convening the moving ceremony earlier. We value this opportunity to commemorate the victims of the Mumbai attacks and other victims of terrorism. Terrorism is a global threat, and the only effective response is a multilateral one. We have seen how fragile states can become safe havens for terrorists to plan attacks thousands of miles away. International cooperation must remain the cornerstone of our strategy. Also, Norway firmly believes this strategy must be a preventative one. It is critical for the international community to renew its collective commitment to the 2030 agenda and address the underlying drivers of radicalization. This requires a whole-of-government and whole-of-society approach with the full inclusion of civil society partners. Norway has three priorities as we continue the fight against terrorism. First, we must counter all forms of terrorism. While there is an urgent need to monitor the jihadist threats in areas such as Afghanistan and the Sahel, we must not forget that the threat of violent right-wing extremism has grown and internationalized. Second, we must hold ourselves to a higher standard than the threat we seek to eliminate. The fight against terrorism must be conducted in full compliance with our obligations under international law, including international human rights law and humanitarian law. Third, and finally, we must maintain a gender-sensitive approach in all counterterrorism efforts by recognizing the diversity of roles that men and women play, addressing the gendered differences in radicalization, recruitment, and targeting, and ensuring the participation of women in CT strategies. Norway believes that these principles should inform all counterterrorism efforts, including ones to address specific challenges such as the topic of this special meeting, the misuse of new and emerging technologies for terrorist purposes. We look forward to a rich and interesting discussion on this issue tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I now call on the Vice Consul General at the consulate general of China in Mumbai, Ms. Yan Hua Wang. You have the floor.
Honorable ministers, Madam Chair, colleagues, the global endeavor against terrorism has made greater progress in recent years, while the threat of terrorism is still growing, especially the terrorism financing shows a diversified trend, and the internet becomes an important financing platform for terrorist organizations. The fact that terrorists use digital currency to finance should be concerned. New methods and features of terrorism financing not only pose challenges to international counterterrorism cause, but also undermine the stability and safety of international financial system. Firstly, we should formally foster the concept of community of shared future. Terrorism knows no borders. We share the common stakes, so we must work together to promote the cooperation on counterterrorism financing with the principles of objectivity, professionalism, and pragmatism. We should stress coordination on global, regional, and national level. It's important to respect the leading role of all countries in combating terrorism financing, avoid mutual accusations, and politicizing technical issues. Secondly, we should promote capacity of combating terrorism financing. We should take an objective view of the gap in financial regulation between developing and developed countries. Through mechanisms such as UNOCT, UNSCTC, UNOTC, FATF, FSIBS, we are committed to providing constructive support to developing countries. Thirdly, we should strive to eliminate the root causes of terrorism. Counterterrorism requires a comprehensive approach to address both the symptoms and root causes. We must take political, economic, and judicial measures in a integral manner to eradicate the breeding ground of terrorism. The international community should accelerate the implementation of 2030 Sustainable Development Agenda and break the vicious circle of poverty and terrorism. China attaches greater importance to combating terrorism financing and places a positive role in relative international cooperation, making important contributions to international and regional peace and stability, as well as the security of the international financial system. We are ready to work with the international community in strengthening cooperation and communication on combating terrorism financing and making unremating efforts to eliminate the threat of terrorism so as to achieve world peace and development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I now turn to Ambassador Vanessa Frazi, Permanent Representative of Malta to the United Nations in New York. Vanessa, you may please speak from the podium. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, ministers, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to express my gratitude to the government of India for hosting us and for all the preparations that were made to ensure that the special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee can successfully convene outside its usual seat in New York. The wreath-laying ceremony we experienced earlier reminds us of the horrors of terrorism and violent extremism. Malta also pays its respects to all those that lost lives during the Mumbai attacks. Malta remains convinced of the need of a multilateral approach to countering terrorism. The level and complexity involved in the spread of radical ideologies and violent extremism permeating through all our societal structures informs us that only through international cooperation can we better improve law enforcement, border security, the mastering of new and emerging technologies, and the respect for human rights. As an incoming member of the UN Security Council, Malta is committed to work closely with the Counterterrorism Committee and within the Security Council in ensuring that countering terrorism receives the importance it deserves. I am sure we will have more opportunities to explore ways of ensuring that the Security Council stays ahead of the curve on a pivotal issue such as new and emerging technologies during the formal session tomorrow. Turning to terrorism financing, it is important to acknowledge that terrorist organizations have continuously developed new means to access funds for their operations. These include the proceeds of criminal activity, including money laundering and the use of new virtual and anonymous payment methods. Improvisement, including of cross-border criminal activity and the use of emerging technologies such as artificial intelligence, can help us bridge the gap with the ever-evolving strategies employed by terrorist organizations. Malta currently hosts the International Institute for Justice and the Rule of Law, which provides capacity building to prosecutors and the judiciary of neighboring countries and beyond in a bid to improve the criminal justice skills of practitioners to effectively address terrorism and cross-border crime in compliance with human rights and the rule of law. Law enforcement and the judiciary also need to be well-equipped to prosecute cases which are becoming more complex and include elements linked with criminalities and violent extremism. We thank all the briefers for their insights on combating terrorism financing, and we very much look forward to work with the current and incoming members of the Council to ensure that our global approach towards countering terrorism remains effective and sensitive to what lies on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I now turn to His Excellency Domingos Fernandez, Deputy Permanent Representative of the Republic of Mozambique to the United Nations. You may please speak from the podium. Thank you.
Your Excellency, Mr. Michael Moussa-Dam, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Gabon and President of the United Nations Security Council. Your Excellency Dr. Subramanya Jaisankar, Minister of Foreign Affairs of India. Your Excellency Mr. Vladimir Voronkov, Under-Secretary General for Counterterrorism of the United Nations Office. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, we are gathered here to pay tribute and express our most sincere solidarity to the innocent victims of 2008 terrorist attack in this place. I wish to thank with deep appreciation the Security Council Committee of the United Nations and the government of India for organizing this important ceremony to remind all of us what happened in this hotel fourteen years ago. My country, Mozambique, associates itself with other delegations to express once again our deep condolences to all families who have lost their loved ones and those who were injured. Madam Chair, it is clear testimony that terrorist activities do not select and care of the victims. In 2008, lives of innocent people were lost, and today, beyond the human and also economic and social infrastructures have been destroyed, living families disintegrated or traumatized. Most of the target victims are children, women, people with disability, and elders. It's also with concern we witness the spread of terrorism over the world, posing a serious threat to international peace and security. No country is immune from terrorist attacks, and no single country can succeed in combating terrorism. We need to combine actions through reinforced cooperation at national, regional, and international level using various instruments and strategies to fight this phenomenon. Therefore, this event is a fundamental tool at this junction. The presence of representatives of the states and other segments of the society, it testifies the importance and pressing need to act in a collective manner to find the root sources that sustain terrorists. This collective action would enhance our effort to avoid that non-state act. This collective action would enhance our effort to avoid that non-states actors use science and new technologies to commit brutal and inhuman practices. Mozambique believes that the fight against terrorism will succeed through a consolidated and holistic approach, combining technology, control of proliferation of arms in hands of terrorist groups, tracking their financial transactions, and avoiding more radicalization of a large number of people. In our perspective, these actions should be carried out everywhere at national, regional, and global levels in order to prevent that cyber crimes and finances are used for terrorist purposes. In this context, most vulnerable countries need to be supported financially to acquire necessary capacity to track and save goods of the terrorist groups. Finally, Chairperson, we would like to reiterate Mozambique's commitment to the global effort and synergies to eradicate terrorism worldwide. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Ambassador of the Republic of Ecuador to India, Mr. Francisco Teodoro Maldonado-Guevara. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Excellencies, distinguished participants, and colleagues. First of all, on behalf of the Government of Ecuador, allow me to pay homage to the victims of the Mumbai terrorist attacks and their families fourteen years ago. Ecuador, my country, strongly condemns and rejects all forms of terrorism. It is a moral imperative, and we therefore remain committed and determined to working together to adopt and implement at the multilateral level effective measures to counter the use of emerging technologies for terrorist purposes. Allow me to express as well our appreciation to the Government of India for hosting the special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee, as well as our gratitude for its generosity in facilitating the participation of my delegation, which is one additional example of the consistent policy of cooperation that India maintains towards fellow developing countries in several areas. As an incoming member of the Security Council, Ecuador follows with great interest the deliberations that take place within the CTC. In that respect, we are of the view that the selected topic for the meeting is pertinent and timely. We share the concerns expressed about the grave threat that terrorism continues to pose to peace, security, and democracy in several parts of the world, including our own region. It is therefore urgent that governments, international organizations, and organizations from civil society strengthen their level of coordination in order to combat this threat. It is for this reason that my delegation welcomes the organization of this meeting. In closing, we would like to reiterate our appreciation to the Government of India for hosting this meeting, and we are confident that it will provide us with valuable inputs for our participation in the Security Council, as well as for designing national policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I now invite the Consul General of Japan in Mumbai, Dr. Fukahori Yasukata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Jaishankar, Minister of External Affairs of India, Ministers of Member States, Heads of Delegations, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to extend our congratulations on holding this special meeting. Japan would like to take a moment to send out the deepest condolences to those who lost their lives and their loved ones in the horrendous terrorist attacks that happened here fourteen years ago. Japan welcomes and commends the success of the first Global Congress of Victims of Terrorism in September this year. We condemn terrorism and violent extremism in all forms, and reiterate that there can be no justification for acts of terror on any grounds whatsoever. We reiterate our condemnation of terrorist attacks, including this 26th of November Mumbai attacks. As highlighted in the fifteenth report of the Secretary General, the threat posed by ISIL remains high in conflict zones and neighboring countries. I would like to point out the following two principles that need to be respected in conducting international cooperation to address the root causes of fragility that provide breeding grounds for terrorist groups and safe havens for such groups to carry out transnational activities. First and foremost, I would like to emphasize the importance of promoting and respecting the rule of law. Without a rules-based international order, transnational terrorist activities will never cease to be supported by someone. The second principle I wish to highlight is the respect for the national ownership of recipient countries. As the eighth Tokyo International Congress on African Development, known as the TICAT VIII, held in Tunisia this summer, Japan expressed its strong support for the promotion of the rise of rule of law through institution building, the strengthening of governance in the judicial and administrative fields, and the return of constitutional order to conflict-affected countries. We look forward to constructively engaging in the eighth review of the global counterterrorism strategy next year. Next year, Japan will serve as an elected member of the Security Council. We hope to cooperate with other Security Council members to address this important global theme together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I now call on Dr. Daniel Frank. He is the Head of Counterterrorism Coordination, Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Switzerland. You have the floor.
Madam Chair, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to express our gratitude to the Government of India for hosting the special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee of the UN Security Council and for its warm hospitality. At the outset, I would like to acknowledge the significance of this venue, wherein 2008, over thirty people died in the terrorist attacks of 26th November. Switzerland strongly condemns this heinous crime and stands in solidarity with the families and friends of those who lost their lives. Today, we are also grateful to the survivors that shared their very personal stories. All victims of terrorism deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. We all have the obligation to support them wherever we can, including by protecting their right to remedy just satisfaction individually tailored measures that reflect each survivor's individual needs, taking into account the victim's gender, age, disability, and origin. Furthermore, states should identify in cooperation with victims' organizations and other civil society actors specific measures that prevent the recurrence of these crimes. To that end, measures designed at institutional, community, and individual levels can inhibit best the efforts of terrorist networks. Madam Chair, the United Nations Global Counterterrorism Strategy enshrines a holistic and balanced approach to countering terrorism. Switzerland has referenced the global strategy as a guideline in its own national counterterrorism strategy, as well as its strong commitment to the implementation of United Nations Security Council resolutions. As a future member of the Security Council, we will be a reliable partner in the fight against terrorism and continue to emphasize that counterterrorism efforts can only be effective if they respect the rule of law and do not violate international law, including human rights and international humanitarian law. Against this background, we continue to highlight the important work done by humanitarian organizations and civil society actors. When designing or implementing counterterrorism measures, the United Nations and states must always take into account their humanitarian impact and the potential effects of these measures on humanitarian activities. These measures and recommendations must be designed to ensure that terrorists are brought to justice, that conditions conducive to the spread of terrorism and violent extremism are eliminated, and affected states have rule-of-law-based institutions to effectively prevent and counter terrorism. Finally, as a financial center of global importance, Switzerland is strongly committed to the effective fight against the financing of terrorism. We are grateful to India for convening this topic in the special meeting of the CTC by both exploring the risks and opportunities presented by the vast technological changes in the finance industry. Switzerland also comments India for organizing the Third No Money for Terror Ministerial Conference in New Delhi in a few weeks in order to deepen our understanding for these challenges and to finding solutions. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. With that, we have concluded the statements from the current and incoming UNSC member states. We're coming up to our last three statements, interventions from senior officials from the United Nations. It is my honor to invite Mr. Vladimir Voronkov, the Under-Secretary General, the UN Office of Counterterrorism, for making a statement. Mr. Voronkov, may I invite you to the podium?
Distinguished Madam Chair, Ministers, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. I start by thanking the Government of the Republic of India for organizing this very important meeting. Thank you for your warm hospitality. We stand in solidarity with the victims and survivors of terrorist attacks carried out around the world, including here in Mumbai at this hotel fourteen years ago. Victims and survivors are the face of our common humanity. They remind us why we need to act with resolve and unity to break free from terrorist violence and address the conditions conducive to its spread. They inspire us to do more and to ensure that their voices are heard, their dignity defended, their needs addressed, and their rights upheld. Societies benefit when victims and survivors are placed at the heart of our efforts to prevent and counter terrorism. The international community has made significant progress over the last decade to highlight the importance of the role of victims and survivors in countering terrorism. This includes, for example, the adoption of General Assembly Resolutions, one proclaiming 21st of August as the International Day of Remembrance of and Tribute to the Victims of Terrorism, and another one on the enhancement of international cooperation to assist the victims of terrorism. Several member states have also strengthened their legislation and developed national comprehensive assistance plans to better protect, assist, and support victims and survivors of terrorism. While such progress is commendable, concrete and tangible action is needed to comprehensively address the individual rights and needs of victims and survivors of terrorism around the world. This was the clear call to action of victims during the first-ever United Nations Global Congress of Victims of Terrorism organized by my office last month in New York. During the Congress, victims called on the international community to work together, to do more, to support them, and to keep their interests front and center in the fight against terrorism. The United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres called for a particular focus on the provision of mental health and psychosocial support services to victims and their communities for as long as necessary. The United Nations Office of Counterterrorism will continue to prioritize the rights and needs of victims across all the areas of its work. Let's renew our commitment to honor, advocate for, and support victims and survivors of terrorism. Let us rise to this challenge inspired by their courage and strength. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Distinguished guests, I wish to announce that we have in our midst right now the Honorable Chief Minister of Maharashtra, Sri Eknath Shinde G. Sir, we are deeply honored to have you in our presence, and the entire hospitality and organization needless to say of this excellent conference has been made possible only with his support. With that, I will now turn to Mr. Chan Veikshong, the active Executive Director of the Counterterrorism Committee Executive Directorate. May I request you to make your statement?
Your Honorable Minister of External Affairs, Madam Chair, Excellencies, distinguished participants. I wish to commend the Chair of the Counterterrorism Committee for her leadership in spearheading the initiative and organizing the committee's special meeting on countering the use of new and emerging technologies for terrorist purposes. Today, on behalf of seated, I wish to offer heartfelt condolences to the victims of the Mumbai terrorist attacks, including the first responders and civilians. We unite. We unite to commemorate and pay tribute to victims of terrorism, past and present, here and beyond and across the globe, and to provide a platform for their voices to be heard, their interests to be addressed, and their rights to be protected. In accordance with the Council Resolutions 2395 and 2617, seated in close cooperation with the United Nations Office of Counterterrorism, has taken into account the important roles victims and their networks can play in countering terrorism. In particular, our analysis of effective practices and experiences includes measures adopted by member states in compensate victims and provide support services. Seated under the policy guidance of the Counterterrorism Committee and relevant Council resolutions, has its unique role to play in the global endeavors to combat terrorism and countering violent extremism conducive to terrorism. Within the UN counterterrorism architecture, it is seated, it is an assessor of member states' counterterrorism efforts, a facilitator of delivery of technical assistance to member states in need, a promoter of international standards, codes, and practices, and useful experiences, as well as an analysis of new and emerging trends and challenges for the policymakers of the committee and the council as a whole. It works with member states, other UN entities, international and regional organizations, civil society organizations, and other partners as well. Against the backdrop of the evolving terrorism landscape, the special meeting comes at the right moment to discuss the right topics with a view to exploring the right approaches and taking all possible cooperative measures to prevent and and taking all possible cooperative measures to prevent and counter such threats. Seated remains steadfast in its commitment to working with all stakeholders and players to achieve the objectives set forth by the Council Resolutions, as well as the UN Global Counterterrorism Strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we move to the closing remarks. I have the honor to request Secretary West, Sri Sanjay Varma, to deliver the closing remarks.
Honorable Chief Minister Eknath Shindeji, Mr. Michael Moussa Adamo, Foreign Minister of Gabon and the President of the UN Security Council, Ministers, Excellencies, and distinguished participants. Every act of terror results in some human cost. Statistics are numbers, and numbers sometimes merely desensitize us. But terrorism is real, and it is evil. It is around us. It is therefore apt that the special meeting of the Counterterrorism Committee has met in a space once destroyed by a ghastly act of terror. The horrors of those fateful days in 2008 were felt again today by us, particularly through personal testimonies of some of the survivors. I thank Moshe Holsberg, Mr. Karimir Kang, Ms. Neeti Chapakar, and Ms. Devika Rotawan for sharing their personal tragedies, and Ms. Vaishali Tokara Mumbale for being with us today. Mumbai is a city of dreams. For millions, the city continues to be the custodian of their aspirations. It is also called the gateway to India, and for all the possibilities it holds, it is also referred to as the maximum city. The 26/11 attacks were schemed to destroy the spirit of one of the world's greatest symbols of diversity, free enterprise, and creativity, where that act also had a consequence on lives from Australia, Austria, Canada, China, Finland, France, Germany, Israel, Italy, Japan, Jordan, Malaysia, Mauritius, Mexico, Netherlands, Norway, Oman, the Philippines, Singapore, Spain, Thailand, United Kingdom, and the United States of America. Many of our distinguished delegates present here today come from these countries and will therefore sense the anguish even more. Excellencies, allow me to record a deep sense of gratitude to all the Counterterrorism Committee members and other Member States for their homage to the victims of the 26/11 attacks. We also especially convey our gratitude to the Foreign Minister of Gabon, Ghana, the UK, USA, and Minister of State from the UAE for their powerful messages. Our appreciation also goes out to the distinguished ministerial representatives from Albania and ambassadors and heads of delegations of the UN Security Council Member States, and to the UN Under-Secretary General for Counterterrorism, Mr. Vladimir Voronkov. The briefing on counterfinancing of terror is essential to any counterterrorism narrative. We receive these inputs thanks to the Counterterrorism Executive Directorate, particularly Mr. David Skaria and Ms. Jennifer Bramlett. We equally acknowledge the contribution of all our distinguished briefers, like Joint Secretary Thakur, Special Secretary Rezvi. We also acknowledge the presence of the media and other participants for their presence and contribution in today's session. I also thank Dr. R.Jaisankar, Honorable External Affairs Minister of India, for his presence, opening remarks, and his guidance in organizing the special meeting of the CTC in India. We extend a gratitude to the Honorable Chief Minister of Maharashtra, His Excellency Sri Eknath Shinde, and his senior officials, particularly the Commissioner of Mumbai Police, Vivek Phansalkar. Some words in recognition of this legendary Taj Mahal Hotel and its courageous staff, who stood up to threats and demonstrated that the big fight against terrorism can also sometimes be led by simple individuals and civilians. Excellencies, ladies, and gentlemen, as humans, post any trauma, we seek answers or explanations. Can 26/11 ever be undone? Can lives lost, Indian or foreign, be relived? Can emotional scars be erased? Sadly, perhaps never. But as we leave the shores of this iconic city, may this first-ever presence of the representatives of the Security Council here in Mumbai provide a sliver of closure to the families and friends of those 166 victims whose lives were plucked away in 2008. We also hope that this visit and the ensuing dialogue adds to our resolve that 26/11s will never happen again, whether in India or elsewhere in the world. On behalf of the Government of India, I thank you for your presence and participation.
I thank the Secretary for his remarks. And before we move to closure, three important announcements. The first, lunch. I wish to announce that for all heads of delegation, the lunch will be served at the gateway room, which is right next door. For the others, the venue is the ballroom, also quite close by. May I request that all others remain seated as the heads of delegation first move to the gateway room for lunch. The second announcement is about departure. All are requested to gather at the tower lobby of the hotel by 3:30 to catch the buses that will take us onward to the airport and then to our next destination, Delhi. And finally, the third announcement is about photographs. I'm told that all delegates can download pictures of today's meeting from a Google Drive link, which is being circulated, I'm told, by the seated. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.